We'll call meeting to order. Janelle, we'll just get started right off the bat with communication.
All right, so we will start with our administrative team. We'll turn it on over to our elementary principal if you want to come on down. You're the first contestant.
On the Price is Right.
Price is Right.
Spin the wheel, Bob, spin the wheel. Hi, everybody. Thanks for being here tonight. First, kudos to our third grade students and staff for a successful wax museum. You should be receiving a link probably by the end of the week with a virtual wax museum. And it's just going to be fabulous, that's all I'm going to say, so stay tuned for that one. This afternoon, Mrs. Strand and our fourth grade students did the Veterans Day program. That was just, you know, a couple of you were there. It was just such a heartfelt experience, so kudos to all of them for their hard work and the way that they included and welcomed our veterans and their families. It was very powerful. And then, of course, to our staff for coming together to support one another during our substitute shortages. Everyone's leaning in and playing in their part to make the transitions between teachers as smooth as we can for kids. We rounded off the end of first quarter with conferences. Those were very successful. Some were in person, some were virtual, as per parent or teacher request. Our paraprofessionals are trained in two programs to help our kids with reading and writing, Snap and Read and Co-Writer. That happened on one of the last in-service days. Our next conference day, they're going to be trained on how to check out books in the library and what the re-shelving process looks like, so that if we do have those shortages or we're working one-on-one with kids, we can just intermix fluidly and have the skills in place to do that the right way. Upcoming, letters training continues. We'll be doing that again this Friday morning. Super excited because we've had a few grade level meetings this week and kids are moving. They are making gains. And the kids that are struggling are being identified early and moved. So there's lots of fluidity, like we talked about. That was one of our goals within those power half-hours. It's really fun to see staff working together and having those in-depth conversations based on some of our letters training and having that shared language. Town Hall Live is coming up next Monday night, and we'll be talking about our family groups. So look forward to that update, too. You have any questions or concerns for me?
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, Anna David at the secondary, come on down.
All right, good evening. So Thursday, we have our Veterans Day program, and the public's invited. Grades six through eight will do their program at 9:55, and grades nine through 12 at 10:35. Essentially, it's the same program. And we did get word out for the public to be able to attend, and we'll recognize any of our veterans that are there. Tomorrow's the last day of the quarter. And then Thursday, we begin the new quarter for one day, and then we have teacher in-service on Friday. So it's kind of an interesting calendar tidbit there. On Friday, for our in-service, we do have a number of our teachers that are participating in the letters training. We do have some activities planned for the teachers that are not participating in that they'll be doing some things in the Innovation Center to give them some more training on some of the machines and some things, and they'll be making some products out of there and hopefully work on ways to bring in their different departments into that program. They're also going to be working in the wood shop on the small lathes. And Mr. Peepenberg has some students that are going to come in on Friday and teach the staff on how to do it. So we'll have a rotation on that. So we, you know, we've spent a lot of time with the Innovation Center and the new facilities. We are starting to look at some things that we could do differently within our science department. We are looking at creating some outdoor classroom space on some of the property that we have. It's kind of a long-term goal that we have. We're also looking at the possibility of turning the courtyard that is in the middle school side of the building, turning that into more of an outdoor classroom and science space instead of trying to, you know, make it look like a flower garden or something. We want to be able to put in some things that science classes can go out there and do some work. Again, we continue also, as Mary indicated, we're always short subs, teachers and paras. We've, our teachers have done a fabulous job of filling in when needed and helping out. And Jen has really had to make phone calls every morning to staff and get emails out to see if they can get some help with that. But we're working on it. Any questions for me?
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, Matt, come on down. Come on in, activity, Lance.
Well, we're wrapping up fall and starting up winter, so fall officially ended with our volleyball's historic season. It was the first time they had ever made the section championship in school history. So some other highlights within that, they had the school record number of wins. Kylie Tangen set the school record for kills in a career, she's actually a junior. Aubrey Spanier had a thousand career set assists and then did set the school record for career set assists as well in the section championship. Coach Humbert was named the CMC Coach of the Year. So that was quite a season for our volleyball ladies, and congratulations to them.
Nice.
Dance and girls' hockey are started. They're gearing up ready for competition. Girls' hockey, in fact, had a scrimmage on Saturday already. Gymnastics started this past Monday. Girls' basketball and boys' hockey, excuse me, will begin next week. And then, boys' basketball and wrestling on the 22nd. Again, junior high boys' basketball is actually going on right now. Junior high girls will start after the Christmas break. It's split season there. Tomorrow, we have something pretty neat. We have a student that signed in a national letter of intent to play Division One Women's Hockey at Mankato University, and that'd be Kiana Roski. And so that'll be happening right here. So I actually have that curtain draped out to get the wrinkles off of it. And that's going to take place during connect time tomorrow afternoon. And Miranda from the district office will get that out on social media. So because of the connect time that has been put in place, she's able to have some of her teammates and students be part of that without getting out of class to do it. So it's a pretty cool thing. Probably the biggest item in the athletic department, I would say, is a discussion of shot clock with basketball. And so at the State High School League, that's a hot-button item. And they sent out a survey. I did send to all the schools. Three hundred and eight schools responded, and I'd sent that information to Janelle. But basically, eighteen percent of the schools that responded already have the capacity to use or implement a shot clock within their varsity competition. So that's eighty percent left that would have to implement it. So the way it was presented was such that it's a foregone conclusion that it will happen. And then I think there's only eight schools, or eight, excuse me, states in the nation that actually have it. I'd have to look to give you those exact informations. But just so you're aware, if we were to put a shot clock into our gym, you'd be looking at sixty-three hundred and twenty dollars is the quote that I got on October 19. That would, I don't think that will be for installation at all. So then our maintenance crew or somebody would have to install that. And we'd certainly have to pay electricians to wire it and stuff as well. So, I mean, it'd be bad. If you wanted to have, like most schools do when they have the shot clock, they have the game clock right down on there. We'd be looking at having to upgrade our scoreboards in the high school gymnasium because they're not really compatible with what they have right now. So they seemed like they were going to give a heads-up or some kind of, you have two or three years or whatever in implementation phase, so.
They haven't given the warning yet to say?
They have not, no. They just discussed the, so all the schools were sent that survey. And then we're supposed to meet as an admin team, respond to the survey with one response per school district. And then they were going to take that information, and they discussed it at the last board meeting, High School League Board of Directors, but they didn't do anything with it.
On an ongoing basis, for each game, can the person running the scoreboard run that through it? Do you have to hire another person? So you have to have two people?
Yeah, so I can, I'll just forward you the information that they sent. But as far as what the responses are, I know in the, from the administrative side, Janelle's, it's money. From the activities director's side, it's personnel and training, you know? I mean, it's just one more person that you need twenty-six times because thirteen boys and thirteen girls, roughly. And then, yeah, so you have your cost, and then you have your training.
I was going to say, you've got to have training, that's a tough job, that one.
Yeah.
No way to do it.
You can't do it, and there are certain rules that go with it, right? And when you start it up and when you don't, and how much times on it, and then when do you reset it and so forth. And so I know I've talked to a few A.D.s that have it in their gym and have used it for certain games. You can use it right now if teams mutually agree. If somebody has it in their gym and we would go there and didn't want to use it, we would not have to. Our coach could say, no, we would, as long as they mutually agree, you can use it. So teams that have used it already, I mean, they do have issues where it'll go off and forget to reset it or like there's going to be a learning curve with it. But an interesting fact is that the coaches association is what's pushing it. The basketball coaches are very much in favor of the shot clock, and so.
I can see that, I guess, just on a district kind of thing. Knowing it's inevitable probably is a good thing to have in conversation, at least moving forward. And do you feel it's inevitable?
Well, it hasn't lost any momentum, right? So the hot-button item when I started was district football. Conferences were going to go away, and then district football was going to start. And that got pushed off and pushed off and pushed off, and it's here, right? So I, if you're asking me to bet, yeah, there'll be shot clocks. Is it three years, five years, two years? I don't have enough information on that. I think when you're looking at five-year budget plans, it just makes sense to put that in there. And whatever year it fits, do it, and you're going to need it, you know?
That discussion has been ongoing for like ten, fifteen years. I remember it started way back when Melody was just out of college.
When was the last inkling of the survey? Was it 13?
Two thousand thirteen. I haven't filled out a survey on it directly from the High School League yet until this year.
But the discussion was started way back then, a long time ago.
Maybe it's fifteen. Maybe due to Coach Association, is that fair to say?
Yeah.
As far as the High School League goes, they get proposals from different activities all the time. Right now, there's a proposal for softball to go from twenty to twenty-four games, right? So every sport has an advisory committee, and they take information from the coaches' association, reps, as well as certain people that are on the High School League Board of Directors and then the actual directors that work at the High School League sit in on those committees. Any other questions for me?
So just, just on the basketball, there's a boys' committee and a girls' committee, or are they one committee?
Advisory committee?
Yeah.
I don't have, I can find that answer out for you.
Girls and the boys are both on the same page, or if there's some.
For the shot clock?
Yeah.
Yeah, the information that I've seen is that they're both overwhelming in favor. So I should just get them, what I'll do is I'll just get that information. I'll email it out to you because it sounds like you're interested in where it's coming from and what the status of it is. South Dakota's right next door, and they have it, right? So that's a little bit of pressure. It's like when you, if your neighbor calls off school in the snowstorm, and then you get a little bit of pressure to, what are you going to do? I think that's, I mean.
I think just advice, yeah, keeping it on a five-year plan, putting it in front of the facilities committee to keep on a conversation, just makes sense.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Matt Dickhausen. What did I say, walking?
Good evening, everyone. Just a few things to report on. The PAC has been going really strong, lots of activities. In fact, just to give you a snapshot, so Sunday when I stopped in there, we had two pace setter basketball court rentals going on at one time. We had a blacklight Nerf battle birthday party. We had open indoor soccer, open gym, residents walking on the indoor track, Mamma Mia community performance going on down there, and multiple people working out. So it's really exciting, just the hub that it's really becoming, which was what our vision was when we, you know, all the years that we worked on this. So it's really exciting to see. We did get some press on the PAC and the West Central Tribune, which is cool. We are gaining some rental revenues, like I mentioned, with pace setter camps and tournaments for the district to help offset some of those costs. Upcoming general community update, our brochure goes to press this Friday. So many new and exciting programs and offerings. Actually, we didn't have enough room in our book, so we had to cut some things out, which is a good problem to have. So Paws are currently at one hundred and four students this school year. Our live stream, we ended the fall live stream broadcast season with over fifteen thousand views. So those would be views that happen during the streams because we do pull those off until the end of the season. And that's, of course, because we had great teams playing. I mean, we had great success in football and volleyball, and so it was a fun broadcast season. The, just about sold out our winter season sponsorships in two days. And we have that schedule pretty much all set. And sent out a new Bulldog Bark yesterday. So if you have anybody else that wants to be on that list, just let me know. Other than that, any questions for me?
How about a cross-country meet next time? I was thinking you with a camera.
I think there's, isn't there like golf carts up there? Like bike guy would do, jogging, no. If we had the wide, the internet, we talked about actually doing a golf match and doing some of that, but we just, they don't have a strong enough internet up there. But if that was to happen, maybe 5G will get us there, right? That'd be cool.
What about our new fitness center membership since we had the open houses?
Yeah, so our largest amount are Silver Sneakers, our senior population for new membership sales. Now, when the weather starts cold, or getting colder, we start getting more of those regular paid memberships, too. So they're starting to come in too now, so, yeah, yeah. Any other questions?
All right, thank you. All right, and I got a call from Mr. Guzzi. He wasn't able to be here this evening. He's not feeling well, and so he just wanted me to share a couple of things. The boilers are fired up, and I, for one, am grateful. And he just wanted to, he was, he knows the indoor air quality project. You know, there's, we're going to be talking about that this evening. And so just really, he didn't have a lot, but he just wanted to remind everybody that, you know, if there's any concerns or anything that he needs to be aware of, just to let him know. But mostly his, we're moving into fall, firing it up, so the buildings are ready to roll. That's the buildings and grounds. So that's the communication items for the evening.
Okay, thanks. Want to be funding discussion for indoor air quality project.
All right, so a couple of things to, I guess, first and foremost, the bids did come in for the indoor air quality project. Unfortunately, they did come in four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars over budget from where we anticipated. So we've got, Site Logic has gone back to the bidders to analyze, to do some internal looking to see if there's ways that can bring those costs down to be closer to budget. I, we have received verbal approval of the ESSER money that is going to be applied to the project. But really, then the heart of this, the discussion that we need to have this evening, and the reason that I have invited Greg Crowe to be here to visit with us, and so Greg, I'll invite you to come on up and you can join us, is to walk through really the options. And these are, these will not be new discussion items for you. These will be things that you have heard before. But I really wanted to have Greg here to share with you the language and the consistent graph so that you see the information, that it really follows the vein of the conversations that you've been having over the course of, over the course of time. So do you want me to pull this up? I do have these, well, I have them digitally. They are saved. I didn't know which order to put them in, so I didn't link them into this document. But I do have them saved in the drive for you all as well.
Okay.
Okay?
So you're probably familiar with these schedules. And the first one that I just handed out is pretty straightforward. You don't need to spend a lot of time on it. It's the sources and usage schedule of how we get, how we get from project costs to bond size, where we can start calculating the potential tax impact and bond structure here. So what we've done here is incorporated the additional approximately five hundred thousand dollars of project costs to get to a total of two point three four billion in total project expenditures. And then we factor in discount allowance that goes to the bank, legal issuance costs. And we also have capitalized interest, which I think we've talked about before, that if you move ahead with this project, you won't have an opportunity, of course, to get it onto the paid twenty-two levy. And there'll be an interest payment due in fiscal twenty-three, which would normally have been on the levy. And we'll set aside in this estimate fifty thousand dollars of bond proceeds. So we've added that on top, so we're not changing the project by fifty thousand dollars so that we would make that payment out of bond proceeds instead of off of the levy. So that's how we get to the bond amount of two point four eight million dollars. And so the next thing that I handed out is the detailed amortization table in the iChair. And if you really want to look at the numbers, you can. We've built in your updated tax base. We've got information today from State County about the growth in your tax base. We've got your existing debt and this possible new bond issue and how that would impact taxes then. But you can see it better a little bit on the chart in the back with the green. And what we're showing here is your existing debt in green and a potential two point four eight million dollar bond in yellow. And we would initially, if you remember, when we sold the bonds from the 2019 election, we intentionally incorporated a dropdown in the tax levy. And you can see that where the green bar has dropped down in 2025. And the reason for that is we all knew that this project was out there and wanted to give you an option to be able to complete the project while, you know, minimizing the additional tax burden upon your taxpayers. And so until that dropdown occurs, we have two small interest payments that are the small yellow bar. And then we work off of that, and we have larger payments that include some principal and basically level going forward and higher because of the payment dropdown on the existing bonds. But as I said, that was intentional when we set up the bond from the 2019 election. The other important context for you is because of the good interest rates and the slight, and the growth in the tax base that you've experienced since 2019, the dash line represents what you talked about to the voters in 2019 about how much they would be paying in taxes for that project. Tax rate of just about fifteen percent exactly. And because of those favorable rates and because your tax rate is going a little bit more than we anticipated, the tax rate is actually substantially, taxes are always too much, but substantially below fifteen percent, right? And so even in adding this additional debt, you would be in a position where you're still well below what you talked about with the voters in 2019 in terms of tax impact for that project. So just so that you have some context for that, we thought that might be helpful. Now, that, there is a, there is a tax impact to that yellow bar relative to, you can see in 2022, the tax rates actually went down a little bit. So to kind of basically bring it back up to where it was in 2021, there would be an added levy of about fifty thousand dollars. And so on the hundred and sixty thousand dollar home example, that's about nine dollars a year. So about seventy-five cents a month. For most people, that would not even be discernible as they look at their taxes and how they change from year to year, given all of the other changes that happen in taxes. But for transparency, we thought we'd run that so that you'd have a sense of what that yellow bar means. And so, so this is set up in this way as an indoor air quality health and safety project under the LTFM program. And I don't want to, I don't want to go over everything you know already, but let's just make a differentiation between what you see in your budget every year for LTFM, which is a dollar per pupil that the state gives you. And this is a separate funding bucket from that. It's the same program, long-term facilities maintenance. But because it's an indoor air quality project that exceeds a hundred thousand dollars at a site, you have the authority to make an additional levy to finance the project. So, and your options are, you could make a two and a half million dollar levy next year and finance it with that. But that doesn't make a lot of sense. That's a huge tax impact. So you also have the ability to bond and use that extra levy to raise funds to pay for debt service on the bonds. And in doing that, it also qualifies for the Ag to School credit. So the state will pick up a portion of the cost of the project. And so that's an advantage to using bonds. So this does not commit any of your existing per-pupil revenue that you can use for roofs and windows and doors and floors and all those kinds of ongoing different maintenance. But as an option, you could do that, and we looked at that.
Yep.
So this is, this is what we're, we kind of, we call an over and above levy, where it's over and above your regular LTFM revenue. So you also have the option of taking that three hundred and eighty dollars per pupil and committing a portion of that to making debt service payments. And if you remember, you qualify for about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year of LTFM revenue. And on this next chart, the left-hand side of the table shows what your existing revenue is. And then in the middle, we're showing how you would make a bond payment on a two point five million dollar LTFM bond using this funding source. And it's structured a little bit differently because we don't need to have the interest-only payments because there's no tax impact for it, it's coming out of your general fund. And so you would be committing just around two hundred thousand dollars a year of your three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to finance these projects over fifteen years. And that would leave you, as you can see on the far right, about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of funds remaining. At the top, you see that that commits about fifty-six percent of your per-pupil revenue for fifteen years. That's a number that's relatively high. And we have, you know, advised districts that unless they have a very new physical plan, they probably don't want to commit that amount of money to bond payments because you will have other things happen that you can't generate extra revenue for, like boilers and roofs and windows and all those other kinds of things that come up, especially over the course of fifteen years. So that is an option that's available to you. But you would be stretching your general fund capital resources pretty thin and maybe more than you want to. So that being said, kind of a big information dump, but happy to answer any questions about the ideas, the concepts, you know? Where do you go from here?
Right. So I think that's really why I invited Greg to be here because he's been here for some of those discussions with you along the way. And so really to understand what is, what direction would the board like to go to finance and fund the second portion of this project? That is, again, we have about a million dollars in the ESSER funds that have, we have received verbal confirmation. We're working through the details of the final portions of that. But this would fund the remaining balance of the program and project as it would move forward. As I mentioned, I do have Michael here from Site Logic as well, so he can answer any construction cost questions that we have. So he can answer any construction cost questions that we have. Um you know, this this would be the the bids would be presented in November's at November's business meeting in addition to um any bond discussion, bond issuance decisions. Those would move forward in uh November on the business meeting as well. So in order to kind of get things moving, if this is the direction that we're gonna continue to move. So are there what questions do you have for Greg?
I have a general question.
Okay.
So are we just going to do this bond without asking the public for the money? Under our health and safety?
So and so.
Cause in this community, we were here once before.
So this was this is the concept from so so tell me if that's that's the the concern from I tell tell me more about we were here once before, which.
Can't. We can talk about it offline.
Well, so here's if I guess here's this is not this is not this is not a bonded program.
So but health and safety funds are funds that you can just.
Yes, those are.
That you can just do because you under the guise of health and safety.
Correct. So the difference is is this is not a bonded program that we've put out and we've said we're gonna build a bond a build a facility under this bond
Mm-hmm.
and then use the funds for something different. This is a very, very is so like let's 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 think about.
I understand. I don't understand how that works. So I I don't have an issue of how it works, but there are two ways to do those.
Right.
Um and one of them, you ask the public when you're you're spending their money.
Sure.
You're asking the public about it.
Sure.
The other one is because it's health and safety and we put this under health and safety, you can just decide. And we can we can authorize it under health and safety.
That's what this is. This is the health and safety indoor air quality bond. That's that's what that first option that was has been discussed is.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what that is what that is. Yes.
Yeah. So um when we're talking about the LTFM funds, we have roofs. Those roofs take a pile of money. When the LTFM funds started, they were supposed to cover the roofs. So we weren't going back to the public every time for that money. And it seems like, I'm just giving you my perception, cause I I'm not seeing the detail. It seems like we're nicking away at these LTFM funds for other projects. What happens when the roofs start again?
Yep.
We're on a twenty-year cycle and they'll they'll start up and they won't go away. It's just expensive.
Right, right. And the roofs, the the roof systems will be put in on the trajectory of this scale. So what you're so what I pulled up right now and I I put in, so if we have the LTFM impact, so that if we if we use, if we buy the bonds against our LTFM dollars, this is the impact where we come down to about, we're making a hundred and um let me go back up here. Oh, shoot. So we're we're making payments of um where is my? A hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year essentially out of the three hundred and fifty seventy-five thousand dollars for the payments of this. And you're right, that's money that we would be setting aside for on a five-year plan for our roof system. Um this is laid out on ten years, right? So this is the plan that that we have to submit every year. And that these are the dollars that would come off of that plan that you're right, that we wouldn't have to use for the roof system, to use for um, you know, you'll see we we paid for part of our um our um recabling and some of the things that are, you know, the you'll see some of the items in here that have been some of the painting, some of the roof repairs that have um upkeep of fields. Um we have been building in money of for things like um our softball field. That's been an area where we've been, we've known, we've been talking about. This is one of those areas where you can use LTFM dollars. So we've been budgeting some of those funds over the course of years to tackle some of those projects. Roofs are a good example of that as well. Yes. If we tap into a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year of those funds, that those are tied up. They're they're expended and we cannot use those twice.
For the roofs.
So we couldn't use it for the roofs if we don't have it.
Right. So and that's kind of my question. I've never seen a a forecast. We know what we spent in the last twenty years on roofs. And we had the LTFM fund started. Well, it turns out we had about finished a lot of our roofs for temporary time here.
Yeah.
And we're gonna start that all over again, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So there's two ways to go into it. One is with some LTFM funds or we emptied those funds out and we're gonna go right back to the public, same place we were the first time, asking for more money because we don't have the money for it. And I'm not sure I'm seeing the relationship here.
Specific to to specific to roofs?
To roofs.
Can I clarify one?
Sure. Yep.
So the first option with the green bars doesn't allocate any of the LTFM funds. It's only if you chose not to use that method that you'd be accessing your LTFM dollars. So that's why I was saying fifty-five percent is a big commitment of LTFM dollars because you have roofs, you have all these other needs. So it might make more sense because the legislature, the state as part of this program, said if you have a health and safety project, you can levy for the additional cost. Um it's like the old health and safety program. You can levy for the additional cost without reducing the amount of money that you have in the regular LTFM program that you're using for roofs and all those other things. So if you take that route, you're not diminishing your resources for deferred maintenance projects um like in the second fund schedule that had the commitment of existing funds.
Okay. So how much is this project? What is the bids and how much of that is paid for by the Esser funds? And um
Yep.
What's coming out of the LTF funds is money we're charging the taxpayers for?
No, so so the these LTFM, the LTFM dollars that are right here in front of you, that so there's two different discussions that are on the table, Bruce. The first one is to not use LTFM dollars. Okay, that would be to use to use the indoor air quality, health and safety levy.
Mm-hmm.
That would be to keep with that keeps with the discussion. And and I'm gonna I'm gonna look to Greg a little bit because part of what I understand is when when the building, when this building was done, there was discussion about the indoor air quality at the elementary is gonna need to be done as well. So there was discussion about the bond impact if we buy bonds to do this. But it it was not rolled in to the big project that was just completed, right? So am I am I saying that accurately?
Yep, that's correct.
So when the first option is to to access the program that we are eligible for because of the type of project that it is, the indoor air quality project over a hundred thousand dollars. And that would be that would leave and maintain our long-term facility maintenance money, per pupil money that we get that maintains all of the projects throughout the buildings, the roof systems, the the doors, the windows, the you know, the all of the stuff that keeps our building.
Correct.
So there's two different options that we're talking about. The original bid, the the estimate that came in when when this whole discussion started was at one point eight.
So what's the bid today? Doesn't make any difference what came in before it.
Two and a half.
So two two point four.
So two and a half. Just two and a half million.
Yep.
How much is the Esser funds?
A million.
Just over.
So they're a million?
Mm-hmm.
That's what that's what I wanna get at is.
You got a million?
Where did the Esser funds go away? Why are we why are we looking at bonding or LTFMing or doing anything with two point five billion dollars when we have one point one million or whatever it is of Esser funds that we should be taking off the top of that total? Cause that's my understanding where that's what we apply their Esser funds for and that's where our Esser funds should go. So.
Oh, so you need to do need to.
So this is the total if you.
If we bond.
Or out for the whole thing.
Yep.
So if you take a million off for Esser,
Hmm.
basically the structure is gonna move in in about half.
Cut to ten.
So the tax impact is gonna go from nine dollars to five dollars.
Yeah.
Or you know roughly, and those yellow bars are roughly gonna be two, you know, not a half, but a little more than a half.
Yeah. And an LTFM payments would be significant. Now, I'm not in any favor of utilizing any LTFM dollars for this anyways.
And then.
Um but just for
Right, so you're.
conversation sake, that would be cut in half to a.
Tapping about thirty-five percent probably of LTFM revenues.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so so these these numbers that you have don't account at all for the Esser money at all?
That's fine, okay.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what I was seeing too and just wanted to clarify that, cause that.
And it won't take long for us to update that now that you've got the approval and I'm sorry if you.
No, and and it's it is not the formal approval, it's a verbal approval.
Okay.
So it's not it's not I we have not received the here are your funds, go ahead and expend.
Gotcha.
So it that's part of that. It's a verbal. It's not a that that's part of, I think, our confusion back and forth.
But the Esser funds were designed for al- air quality, correct?
But.
It's it's an eligible.
Air quality is, yeah, air quality is eligible factor within Esser dollars, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's come from the federal government.
Correct.
Hmm.
So that won't in- impact our taxpayers at all?
No, not at all. No.
We just lost a a bond issue.
Yep.
Okay, so let's not kid ourselves here. We're talking about going back and gonna hit people for something.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe five bucks doesn't seem like much, but five dollars is five dollars and and everybody else decides they're gonna take a little cut in that thing and all the taxpayer's paying is what's on their statement.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
And then we have all the other things that take place. I think we just need to be kind of cautious
Right.
um how we approach this thing. The health and safety's been out for years. And sometime I'll take you back through some of what
Sure.
what happened and you can find it in history.
Sure.
Um um but the health and safety funds have been used forever. We can go from ten million projects can be paid for by health and safety cause you can slide into the into that. The taxpayer still has to pay for that. We still have to have an operating fund.
Right.
I just don't wanna tick anybody off because we keep on jabbing at them and then we end up with no operating fund.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm having the school with the great air system and no money to pay for anybody inside of it. Doesn't seem like a good idea to me.
Yeah. Yep. And so I think I and and so I think a very real question is um so what would be the implication if we held off on this for a year? So if we said, okay, so if we were to 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 wait for a year, go back and do our bid process, have a go to through our next election, talk about all of this. I think I think one of the real questions that I I want wanted to be able to have Michael speak to is what is the risk we run um with the cost of the project, putting it out for another year? And then what is the risk that we run um from an interest perspective? So Michael, would you mind kind of hopping up and and introduce yourself? I'm sorry, I haven't done a formal introduce.
That's okay. Mike Finniger, I'm the project manager for Site Logic for the for the elementary project.
Yep.
And and those are all good questions. And you know, there's I don't have a crystal ball to give you the right answer, but we see the market out there. We see what's going on right now with inflation. You know, you see it on the news. I heard our turkeys is gonna cost twenty percent more this this year for Thanksgiving. And and that's certainly what we're seeing with the bids that are coming in.
The taxpayer knows that also.
Yep.
And they know what the price of fuel is and they know what the price of groceries is.
So so the gamble is, you you know, are we competing against other districts with the Esser funds available? The Esser funds, from what I understand, are gonna be uh you have to spend them by twenty twenty-three uh June, right? So if you would push the project off another year, you'd lose your Esser funds for this unless there's a new program that comes up.
They have to be expended. We have to be they have to be allocated.
Twenty-four, I thought was what it.
So the the third one, Esser three, is twenty twenty-four. Esser two, part of it we've spent is twenty twenty-three. So there's there's some overlap between the two and the three of one sixty-one and one sixty, but.
If we're talking a million dollars,
Mm-hmm.
what is our final date? At a million dollars, I don't care if it's one or two, where's the million dollars coming from?
The million.
You see what I mean? You can say, oh, there's one and twenty-two and twenty-three and twenty-four.
The million dollars is a combination, yeah. It's a combination, right. So Bruce, it's a combination of like two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, which has to be expended by twenty uh by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. And then the seven hundred and eighty-nine or whatever and and please don't quote me on the numbers as I'm I will I will email this to you
That's fine. That's fine. I just to get a little bit of a grip on it.
But but that's but that's the seven the seven hundred, the bigger dollars, the seven hundred and eighty-nine thou- or whatever thousand dollars, we have one more year to use. So we have proposed to lump them together to help pay for this project cost using that Esser money because indoor air quality is an eligible use of those funds. And it's one-time money. This these funds are not sustain, I mean, they're not ongoing sustainable. It's one-time money. So this was a of in it because it's an eligible project, we couldn't use this type of money to do some of the other projects that we've been talking about, whether it be softball fields, whether it be a track, whether it be um whatever. We can't use this money for a roof system. We can use this money for indoor air quality as an eligible project when it's when we have the data to support why it can be used. So that that's why the Esser funds are allocated in this place versus.
So to get the million dollars, you need to decide if the project needs to take place next summer. Is that what you're saying?
Well.
There's, I think.
There are more experts on Esser funds than me. I I can tell you right now, we got twelve bidders on this project and they were all very competitive bids. Uh the the high number was mechanical and they were three thousand dollars apart on a million dollar, a little over a million dollar bid. So we got good competition here. We know the market's good for that right now. We're still getting, you know, we were able to bid this early in the season and we feel we feel we've got good numbers on it. Now, we wait till next year. Our thought is, you know, the inflation, it's only gonna get more expensive. Equipment's gonna get more expensive, the material's gonna get more expensive, but you know, unless there's a stock market crash or something like that goes on and there's a main.
Given to the stock market crash, everything in my life has gone up ever since I was a young man.
It's gonna go up.
So there's a part of that inflation that you're always gonna have. It's just the reality.
Yeah. Yep. So then so then let's also think about what from an interest perspective. So if we were to push it off for a year, cause our interest our our rates are low and our credit's good. So what does that where are the interest contexts in right?
Yeah, I mean, right now, rates are as low as they've been in fifty years. And there's nothing but upward pressure pressure on interest rates, just like there is on construction costs. And so with the the Fed starting to do some of the things they're doing, we're seeing rates start to creep up a little bit. They plateaued a little in the last week, but everyone's anticipating that they're gonna continue to increase.
Sure.
Um that will have an impact on what what you have to pay for this project long-term in total principal and interest costs.
So can I kind of back up a little more? So the project was based upon CO2 content that was too large in some of the classrooms. There was a discussion about having it all electronically controlled, all the rooms, so you could control air temperature. What is our basis? Both of those? Are there other things that we're trying to accomplish?
And from my understanding, that as well as noise um within the classroom, just and then just overall consistency and temperature um and and control throughout the facility, throughout the building, which is probably the biggest issue in that building.
So when was the report that we based this decision on? Was that before or after? I thought you guys or it was the group before you discovered their handler in the gymnasium that was covered up. Okay, so our analysis was before the air handler was taking place. I don't know if we had other things, but that report was done, I believe, when we were talking about the other building, which presently now is what, a couple of years ago? And there was an air handler that was covered up. Their handler takes care of some of the CO2 issues.
The air handler in the elementary, in the cafeteria is not functional.
Yeah, there was one of those that I believe this group discovered that.
My understanding is that that is the the it's not functional. It does not run and it does not work. So there it does not solve any of the like if you would remove it, if you said if you're like the thought, it was covered, so let's uncover it.
I thought in the report said it was running and it had nowhere to get the air to it. And I thought it came from your group that was doing air quality. And so they may have just shut off an air compressor or a a circuit breaker, so the thing doesn't run. Um but that's part of how it was originally set up to take care of air quality. I mean, if if you have things going on, we had the same thing occur in the band room in that other school. And we went through this process where we're gonna put an air conditioner on everything. We pulled the plans out, which the company that you're representing was there before. There was an air handler in there, same thing. It was covered up with a tile. Their handler is the one that's changing air in the rooms, which is where air quality.
So so the the space that you're talking about right now, Bruce, is not even included in this project. Those that data like that space, this was classroom, this was instructional space. This did not if if and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is I I it is an area of issue, but to to replace that in that space, that's not instructional space. This is in the classrooms and then the instructional space, that that and the and please. and then the instructional space, that, that, and the, and please, if, I, if, if I'm, uh, speaking out of line, please tell me, but I, this has been, that air handler that you're referencing in the cafeteria or wherever that was, that's not even part of the scope because this is in the classrooms. It's in the instructional space that we're focusing on to try to keep it in, it was intended to try to keep it in budget, is where that, so it was.
So the project really is to put, hang those other units on the outside of this building? That took the noise outside, had their quality that went in, and each one was supposed to have an individual unit in the classrooms?
Each?
Yes, that's what's in the project right now. So they would provide, uh, uh, dehumidification right now, ventilation. Dehumidification and air conditioning are kind of the same thing, and new, new heating coil. And it would, uh, uh, use the existing infrastructure, so, you know, we're not replacing steam piping throughout the whole building. We're just gonna disconnect and reconnect. There's a lot of electrical involved in it, so we do, we do need to get power out to these new units, cause they do, they do, they do use more power than the existing units.
And I'm sure that the analysis was using them as compared to replacing the units that are there with, um, a current year insert that goes in that same place?
These are kind of very much like the units you have there, but the units you have there don't have capa, capability of doing any dehumidification or air conditioning, so you need a bigger package and.
So it becomes, we're trying to air condition all those rooms, is that what this, I'm looking for.
And I, and so the, the, that whole dehumidification, air conditioning part, that, that kinda takes me for a little bit of a spin, because I know that was one of the conversations we had, is that obviously we're not necessarily looking to.
It was, it was not intended to be in an air conditioned space, it was to purpose that. I think from, it was to improve the air quality, and from my understanding, um, when we had this kind of initial bid, like, discussion, um, it was not intended to be air conditioned space. What naturally happens when you're doing air quality is when you dehumidify air, it does feel air conditioned. When it's dehumidified, but it was, it, my understanding, when we put these, had the conversation about the units, is they were not air conditioning units, they were not intended to be dehumidification units. So that might be an area that you can go back to, to look at for, just to confirm, cause if that was in the package, that should, you know, that would be something to take a look at, because that was, it was really about the air quality, not about the temperature control as much, but if they came together, it was a dehumidification makes a room feel cooler.
And it's, does, it does do air quality too, I mean, it presents, resists mold and reduces mold chances and. It's kinda now just common, dehumidification is part of an air quality, um, project, really.
Sure.
My premise is a little bit, this came up years ago, okay, then we got to a time where it was starting to come up again. And we said, as a board at that time, well, let's fix the system we have right now, so we know where we're at, right? Well, what did we find? We found all our air filters filthy dirty, we found everything else, we had this whole report, all these pictures. We go through and find that, I become a little sensitive, because we go through that whole report to find out we have an air handler that you guys found, that we didn't find in the first report, that concerns me some, but when the buildings were put together, they put them together based upon certain things, and I know the state changed the CFMs that they wanna, the air changes that you're having in the room, different than they were, but there's a lot of variables to this thing. Um, another concern I have a little bit is where are we headed here? Um, is that elementary school gonna be used for the next twenty years? Um, where are we going for sure? I mean, where's our student population compared to that, or do we end up someday, uh, ten years from now, we walk away from a school that we just plunked in millions of dollars in? And they're over here, are you following me a little bit?
Yeah.
And I, I have a little issue because of the older data, I would love to see a new report where we go in, in the winter time, we're right in, getting to heating season, and find out what's really going on in those rooms. Cause in my mind, it's old data, we also have, um, our, um, new maintenance person.
Yep.
Doing a follow-up to find out if the air filters are all clean and all the rest of that, if their filters weren't cleaned and a lot of that not going on, what? Really wasn't working how it was supposed to in the first place.
There was, there was a, a pretty thorough analysis this summer, and then they also came and did, um, testing in the spaces this, they just did testing this fall, um, air quality testing, so that, that has been done, um. And it was part of the, it was part of the grant submission that we put in for M D E as a result, to be able to show why this would even be eligible. So I can, I can forward that to you, so you can see the information from, from SiteLogic.
I'm just asking questions, I'm not, I was inside on some of this when we were going through it, I'm not on those comedics or anything anymore, but all of a sudden to just step into this, um, I'm kind of uncomfortable, we have a sensitive public.
I, I, you know, there, there's levels that I'm just uncomfortable, as you, Bruce, I mean, and, and part of this, my uncomfortability is coming from when we started these conversations two years ago plus, when we were talking about the new facility as well as indoor air quality, and then we knew the indoor air quality wasn't gonna be wrapped into the, the whole, uh, budget with the new building, that, that we knew was gonna be a separate item. Um, things kinda got tabled for a little while on that conversation, as far as what the cost's gonna be, how we're gonna fund it, and all this and that, as we were kinda going through the new facility, and then we kinda started bringing this conversation back up. Now, almost two years later, we're still using data from two years ago, we're still using essentially, you know, estimates and bids from two years ago. We finally get approval, we go ahead and get these bids in, now we're five hundred thousand dollars over budget, uh, our bid. Um, I, I, you know, I just, there's just, there's just so many variables here that I, I don't know how to wrap my head around it, or, or really what to think. Appropriate next step should be, because.
And, and the bids came in, um, I don't know, and so maybe, Michael, you can tell what the process is. When you now went back and said this is over, over the budget that was, you know, what is the process and what is the timeline for them to revise that, to get that information back to us?
We think, we, we think we can have it prepared, uh, pretty well, by, by your board meeting, twenty-third. We're, we're talking to our design team, our engineers, they're coming up with, with changing some things, we're talking to contractors to see if they have suggestions on things that, uh, could reduce the cost. And as we look closer at it, you know, everybody's got a good idea, we, we'll put them down and ask for some formal pricing on it. So the process probably would be, um, that you would accept the bids the way it's bid right now, and then we would just do a change order for the cost reduction items that we have identified.
Do we know, uh, and not that this necessarily takes any difference, but, uh, uh, in you guys' preliminary bid, compared to what, uh, you know, what these bids come in at, is, has that increased and seemed more mechanical or labor?
Well, um, more on equipment.
Yeah.
We bid equipment and labor on these projects, so we're, we're, we're seeing, you know, up to twenty percent on.
So, yeah.
Even more.
Cause it just, you know, I guess that brings that concern to me too, are we looking at different equipment than what we initially, than two years ago we had conversations about, you know, or, what, what, what's that? Where is that difference coming in?
This was kinda, this was what was budgeted, this is what they use for their estimate, was this, this type of equipment, this type of system.
So the system that we're looking at today, that you, that you have a bid for, is the same type of equipment that was discussed two years ago? It's, this is, this is the timeframe, the time lag difference between having it now versus two years ago.
Correct.
So are there updated systems that may work as well? Two years is a long time.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, this is a, this is a system, a, a type of system that's out there, is probably the, the, one of the more basic systems, to be honest with you. A lot of the schools are getting rid of the, the wall type units and go with more of a central station type system. But that takes, all the ceilings have to come out of the school and it's a lot more work and to put in a central station. This is, this is a, a lot of, lot less, uh, labor. By using those wall, you hung units, we don't have to tear out all the ceilings, replace all the lights and all that work that's associated with, with gutting the building. We're only working in the corner of it, so this is one of the more economical systems you're gonna be able to do to get the indoor air quality project.
Other questions, comments?
Well, I'm just trying to make this real basic for me. We either need or don't need to do something about air quality in the elementary school, I thought the decision years ago was we need to do something. Is it something has to be done today, or can it wait five years? That'd be a question that would come up. If it has to be done today, uh, what I understand is, here's how it would cost, we have a million dollars sitting there that would be given to us to be used. If we don't use it, we lose it, but we would need this amount of money over and above that to do the project. The basic question, where was that money gonna come from?
Right.
And how do we get that money, and if this is something we have to decide next meeting?
Well, and I think, um, and I can, I can, um, have a conversation with Michael and, um, and Scott Munson, who I've been working with about, on the application, to find out what would happen in the event that, you know, if we prolong it a month. You know, I don't know how long the bids are good for, um, if that would give us a little bit more time, if there's additional questions, if you want more data from, from SiteLogic, um, to be presented, and, um, now in, in December, we only have one meeting, you know, because we, we, that's usually our, uh, having big meeting in the middle of the day, and our truth and taxation in the evening. Um, so, you know, we could, we certainly could have more information presented, but I, Rick, that's, that's how I understood this to be, is that this, the, the, the decision was made to move forward with an air quality project. And the, my understanding was that the ESR funds were, that was gonna, when we have access to those, and it's the, what are we gonna do with the bulk of the other, of, of, to fund the bulk of the project? That was my understanding as well, now if that's not.
I'm not sure where that decision came from.
Okay.
Because, um, when we started, we were at a project, an original project, we went out to the public, and we had lots of ideas, and when they came back with the survey, we zeroed in on the survey, and we did what the survey said, and we ended up putting up a facility. I don't remember a separate discussion on air quality by the survey.
That was in that survey.
In the beginning of all of this.
Air quality was, was leading as well as the facility, uh, in, in that survey.
Because I had to report that data around why would, why would our community support, that was what, the indoor air quality at the elementary was right with the, the facilities that were done, so that was in the sur, the same data that was surveyed. The indoor air quality at the elementary.
Which I think is why most public thought that that.
Was included.
Was included into our project, because it was so highly sought after, as well within that survey data.
And may I, it wasn't part of last summer too, that it was supposed to start at the elementary last summer, but we weren't, we wouldn't have been able to finish it in one summer? Because we were gonna tap the building.
Bid schedule was originally important, we'd have all the, everything together, get the bids done appropriately to get the job started on time or something like that.
And, and the setup and takedown was cost prohibitive to do it over two summers, it would have been a, a more, it was more, um, cost, um, cost efficient and effective to have it in one summer versus split over to the teardown setup and all of that. I mean, that was the other, my understanding was the other part of that.
Yep.
So going back to my question, so we, just to make s- simple numbers here, we're one point five million short.
Yeah.
Um, and we would have to decide in November, next meeting, where that money is gonna come from, we can bond that without going to the public, is that right?
Yes.
Correct, cause we can't, we don't have time to do that, but, but Bruce, your issue is, even though we, we can do it, the question is, should we do it?
We've been able to do it for years, health and safety's not a new thing.
But you're concerned about how the public might see it.
At one time, we dealt with one that was far bigger than that, had another zero on the end of it.
Sure, you lost a million dollars too.
Well, that was my.
You know, they'd be pretty concerned, like, oh, there's a million dollars, why didn't you use this, I mean, I, I don't know.
Yeah, and I, and I do, I mean, I, I do worry about, conceptually, we just had our voters say, I'm, I'm not interested. And, and that concerns me, that we now, so I, I hear that, um, Bruce, I also, to that point of being responsible stewards of if we have access to a million dollars to do a project that the community has said is valuable to them, is, is it responsible for us to, to use those funds in that method? And then talk about, how do we communicate the rest of that story?
And I, and I think it, the scope of what we're trying to do is important, uh, I mean, if this was, if we were talking about another facility for athletics, could be one thing, we're talking about air quality for kids, I mean, I can sell that a lot easier if people called me and said, well, why are you spending this money? It's, it's a need for kids' health, it's not something extra that's frivolous and.
And.
Have my people see what.
We've had community support for this for years, it's, it's been a promise essentially that way. I've made it a, the theoretical, a promise to community members, that this is a, a project that we are seriously looking at, this is a project that we're gonna be working towards achieving. When, I mean, the members about the, the federal money, when we talk to anybody, that, that, this is what that going towards, so it's, it, it's funding one point five million dollars, you know, whether through a, a new bond or through L T F M. And I'm not supportive doing L T F M, even if it is only thirty percent of our L T F M dollars, it's still thirty percent of L T F M dollars that I wanna reserve for.
Our roof systems and our, yeah.
And, and maintain that level of savings, cause we do know at some point in time, expensive things like tracks and football fields and, and other, other facility related items are going to have to come up and get replaced, and we're not gonna have a general fund, you know, money going towards a billion dollar track to ask you to replace, we're gonna reserve L T F M now for projects later.
So we have to pass an operating levy next November.
Yep.
So where are we at here? I mean, it really comes down to, to the taxpayer, I know we have a grant, that grant wasn't free either, all of us paid our taxes to get a grant. Government has the money, it's all ours anyway, um, maybe it's not as direct as it is, uh, something specific, but the operating levy, I'm gonna be honest with you, is an absolute priority for me, and it always has been. And I'm, uh, really concerned about some of this, um, the health and safety funds. We could do a deal and put a hundred dollars on our waste taxes and get away with it. The idea is to not to get away with something, we wanna do something that, that works, and we have to be able to explain it to everybody. Let's take the public, so what's inside of a mask? When you breathe in a mask, all this year, is that your own breath that you're smelling? So what is that? That's CO2, isn't it? Right, same thing we're trying to reduce in the classroom.
But this project, this, this issue and this concern was in play, this was there well before any of the masking CO2 context was, was just, my understanding is this survey came, I mean, that was the twenty, this was twenty nineteen.
It was before, yeah, it was before that time, but I'm just saying that we're sitting here today, looking at this whole project. There were rooms that our issue was an hour in the day, there was a couple of rooms where we had, and I'll dig the report out, I save everything.
Sure.
And I got it somewhere.
Yep.
And it will, it's so, said what rooms had what problems and what time of the day they were. There weren't questions like, were the doors open or closed? Was, you know what I mean, is, is, is it just whatever it was at that point in time? I mean, what if you open up the windows, what if you open, not open up the windows maybe, but open up the, the doors? I mean, have we thirty kids in a classroom with the door closed for a good hour and creating our own issue? Yep, this will take care of that.
If I, if I recall some of that report, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but those, those are, were sensors or meters set up for a period of time. It wasn't just somebody walked in the room right now and said, oh, this is what it is, and walked out, was that correct, it was?
I, I, I don't work on that end of it, but I believe that's what they do, I know that's what they do with. I know that's what they do with lights, they monitor.
They monitor the usage across a period of time.
It was, and it said what time of the day the issues were.
Sure. Over the course of, so as a registered for the day, there were your few times.
And it wasn't all of them, there was some of them.
Cause you couldn't, can't censor every room and that'd be.
Right, right.
They actually did a pretty good job.
They, they did. And it, I felt like what, what they came back with us, to us at that point in time was, was a very logical report for what's the facility or what's the ten rooms, whatever it is they were able to, to, to measure, went through peaks and valleys, day, night. It was, if I recall, it was a, a very well run, well done report. But.
So, so what would make, what, what would you like to see that would, I mean, I, I guess I'm trying to, I think we can talk in circles.
I'm, I'm, I'm a community survey person. I loved that community survey that went out on that building. We as a board didn't really even decide that. The public decided what we were gonna do. We're, we're taxing them, we're asking them. We're gonna have to ask them for another bond levy, which did not pass. And it wasn't like it was major close. It didn't pass, it was, it was substantive. Well, at three dollars and 24 cents a gallon for their gas that they paid 224 a year ago, the public's not in the same position. I have a real issue of that. Yeah, I understand we can get a million dollars and this grant's here and that everything might go up, which everything else does. I just, I don't have a really good grip on what I need to do to represent the public to make this happen that they buy. And they say, yep, it's no big deal that you add this 10 or 12 or 15 dollars to my taxes and for the businesses that we add the 135 dollars or whatever to taxes. I, I'm not gonna ask them about it.
Can I talk a little bit about potential tax impact as we're listening to, as I'm listening to the discussion? You know, I think actually at that lower level, we'd have the opportunity to build this debt structure in a way where we capitalize those two small yellow bars in addition to the first year that you can't levy for. And the other yellow, yellow bars would be lower than, than the paid 24 levy. And so ultimately, there would be no tax impact, no additional tax paid in '22 and '23. And then in '24, the taxes would either be the same or potentially drop a small amount in '25 and even compared with '24, add that, add that lower one and a half million dollar levy. So there, so you would have the opportunity to potentially do this without even the five dollar tax impact. And we can, we can rerun all of this tomorrow and get you some updated numbers.
Yep.
What are the latest we can decide and pull the project up?
You know, I, I'm thinking, and I, I don't have this for sure, but I think it's 30 days they're gonna hold their number.
How late do we have to be able to do a project? Do we have to do this before our budget end of the year? What's up, how come it's next meeting?
So because the bids came in and the bids are good for about 30 days.
Okay, so we have to go get new bids.
Well, we have one concern there to think about is material is, is difficult to get. Equipment is difficult to get. And these units are, I believe, 24 weeks out right now. So, you know, that's, we're starting to push it. It, it's getting close, yeah. You have 30 days, you could delay maybe, but maybe their lead time for delivery will get pushed out too. So it is urgent to get this done so you can get that equipment ordered. And you beat the other schools that are maybe bidding later. And then they're gonna, or whatever, you know, but mostly schools, there's a lot of schools doing work. And they're gonna order equipment and then they're gonna get ahead in line. That's certainly something to be concerned about right now.
So why don't we? I, would you get the, the data for, from Scott and have him or whomever pull the data back? We can send that along so everyone can see the updated, because I do know they were out here this fall.
CO2 data?
Yeah, yep. I know they were out, they were out and took new information. We will, I, I'll have you update the schedules and we'll take a look at those too. The, the, so it sounds to me like we're not super interested in, in tying up our LTFM dollars. So just run the first schedule. Am I understanding that right, board members? Okay, so you don't have to worry about, okay? So just run that first, that first impact. And we'll, we'll put that forward and then we'll put this on as a, as an informational item again in, for us to discuss further. And I'll have, we'll have SiteLogic here as well to answer any additional questions. And then at that point in time, you know, I, I'll, I'll pull the survey data that we have and I'll send that back so that we can, because I, I do feel like our, I know our community did identify this as an area of concern and it was a couple of years ago. I honor that. I recognize that it's been a couple of years. I don't know, when I think about turning this around and, and having it, having things organized, ready and being able to do this so that we could run it and have it done next summer? I do know that that's gonna, that's gonna take the lead time. And we also have to be honored that our teachers, I know I can't, I can't expect them in, this is, this is a whole summer, they're beginning to end, they're, they're vacated, moved out of their rooms. You know, it's, it's a big ask for, so it's not, this isn't just a happen, let's make it last minute decision and do it. You know, so I, I do wanna be mindful of that. So I'll get the, we'll put it on the November agenda as a discussion item. Watch your emails because I'll update you with the, the salary, the salary, if you mind, give salary schedules apparently. I'll update the, the schedule, the payment schedule as soon as I get those for all of you. And then I'll also, just for, for anybody that's watching in the public, I will also attach that to this, to this agenda so that people can look at what that is at a revised one and a half. Okay, so that we have that information out there as well. Is there anything else that you feel like you need in preparation so that we can? And, and if we, if we, if we table it next in November, we, then, then we have to talk about it in December. But I just, I worry to kick the can and, and knowing that we get what we need done in our timeline. Cause it's, it's also, we can't have our project, our, our building tied up in waiting, not have the supplies and then wonder about what do we do in the fall when we're ready to start with kids?
I believe there are a lot of logistics to plan out too because pause and targeted services.
And everything would have to be worked out, two different buildings. They all have to, yep, they, there's already discussion.
We're already working on it.
Where are we talking about how to, how to plan for that for, yep, absolutely.
I know, but that, that would have to be set up too.
And those are all, yes. And if that would delay, for sure. Yep. Okay? All right. Anything else before we move on?
I'm sure they'll have a whole one.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um.
MREA membership consideration.
Yep, so I just wanted to bring this, so Jake is, is our current C member. And I believe that Painesville has been a C member for a few years. And one of the things when Jake and I went to the C Fall Conference, we had some discussions about MREA. MREA is the, it is, and I'll just pull it up so you can see the, who they are and what they do. Um, thank you.
Great.
So MREA is the Minnesota Rural Educator Association. One of the things that MREA does as an advocacy, so this is really about our legislative advocacy and having, and the membership that we have with C, which is seeking educational equity, is really about equity and funding. MREA really takes a little bit more of a rural education issue approach. And so Greg Crowe referenced the, the Ag to School Tax Credit. This is, that was one of the big accomplishments of MREA because they knew that schools out in rural Minnesota really struggled to pass building bonds because our farmers really felt that tax impact. So what they did is they came in and they worked with the legislature to develop the, the Ag to, Ag to School Tax Credit. Okay? So MREA, so that's a, that is a focus of what they do that's a little bit different than, than C. And so Jake is going to be attending their Fall Conference to see and have discussion with what are the things that you can do for us as an organization, as a district, for our district? Because I think this might be a better membership for us than C is. Now there, one of the other things that I wanted to show you is just as an, as a, for instance, some of the ways that, that they publish information. So here's an example of the, the pandemic enrollment loss aid. So you can click on any school district and I'll make it bigger. So you can click on Solon Prairie Gray Eagle. They were well above the medium, median at 68,180. Sock Center. Come on down, hang on, I gotta move my mouse or it's not gonna let me go. Oh, wrong way, sorry. Sorry, that just makes my eyes wonky. So Melrose, you can look at Painesville, here we are, 68.5, we are above median. So they put together, they, they pulled together all the data for all of our districts so we can look at how, it's, and this is just like a tool that they, that they put out. But, but their focus really is about rural districts and what our issues are and how to advocate for those issues. So I just really wanted to kind of give you the, the informational FYI that I would like to, to look at that in comparison to C and then determine after Jake has had an opportunity. Cause he's, Jake's been at a lot of the C meetings, the C at, at the state level, the region. He's done some of the work with, at the Capitol with, in that regard as well. So I, I wanted to kind of have his insight.
What's the cost?
It's, it's our cost for this year would be a thousand dollars. It's cut in half for, for the first year. So I would compare it to, if it's worth looking at, we would compare it to C and then I'll bring that back as a recommendation, one way or the other.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't belong to both?
No, I've had, in, and when I was at Masico, two of my members were, they belonged to both. One of them was Rockford, so Rockford's not a very large school district. They're pretty, they're very metro centric, they border some big districts. So they had some more equity issues and funding as well. And then I believe, I believe the other one that was a member of both was possibly Maple Lake. But I know Rockford for certain was a member of, of both. I, when I was at Masico, I was, I worked with Brad Lundell through Mace as a lobbyist. So I, I know him very well and he does good work. I was also part of MREA with Masico. So I feel like I have a, I've, there's value to both. I think as a rural district, we do have unique issues or we do have unique issues, but.
It's a pretty powerful membership. I mean, they got schools all around the state, like it's, it's, it's a big deal. And like I said, their interactive map is, is something that's really unique and you don't find that anywhere else. And like I said, they've kind of got a really big reach and a really big powerful presence over at the state Capitol. So it's, and I feel like we're much more, more of a rural district than some of the schools that you would see. You've got some pretty big schools in the C program. So I mean, you can certainly do both, but personally, I just, I've felt for a long time that MREA would probably be a better fit for our district's needs, so.
My understanding of C was that it wasn't about school size, it was about the community you were in.
Okay.
Cause my kids, my grandkids go to Centennial and they were in C and I'm, what in the world are they in C to Centennial? Well, there's no industry in C, in Centennial. They're all relying up on homeowners. And it just seemed like C was, was trying to help in that area of, what do you do with a district that doesn't have?
Yes.
IBM and Mayo Clinic to get money from. And they were trying to, so I don't know if the rural one would also be working and make equities so that we get our fair share. And that would be a concern of mine, that that's what, it seemed like C was really working at.
And, and that is a true statement. I mean, that is very much C's focus is really understanding how you, you distribute the funding sources equitably. Yes, absolutely, that's.
But the bottom line is if we didn't want to see, they'd still be doing that and we'd still be benefiting from it.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I just think the Ag to School Credit is a big deal that they work on. I mean, that's a really significant deal for our farmers and that's, they're in a pretty rural area and it's helped them significantly. So I mean, just something to think about, I guess.
So I'll have, we'll, we'll put that as a recommendation or a discussion item as well to kind of see.
Do you have, and what the C dues are?
Um, oh, she just, um.
Roughly couple grand?
Off the top of my head, I don't, I'm not even gonna guess because I don't remember. I, I looked at it when it came through and I'll be honest with you, I don't remember off the top of my head. They're not.
In honesty, I spend that kind of money in my small insurance office to be a member of stuff. You know what I mean? But if there's something on there that's extremely valuable to you and your only option is to try and go out and get it yourself, it might be just cheaper to get data off of something like this and participate at the same time. That's the way I look at it.
And I've had a lot of opportunity within our superintendent group. We have a lot of discussion a, as a region. And both Bobby Endahar, who was the executive director for MREA and Brad Lundell, who's the executive director for C, they, they are both teaming at our meetings and they're there, they're present, they're, I mean, we do have a wealth of resources. I think some of the, the communication that comes out from MREA is a bit preferred. It's easier to consume. So for somebody, especially if I were to pass that along to a community member, it's really reader friendly, some of, and, and I think there's some value in that, you know? But we'll, we'll see.
You may have minutes like that, make, make, makes a lot of sense, actually.
We'll see, we'll, we'll see what the, what the, the verdict is out, but, or the jury is out, but we'll see what the verdict is.
The T, substitute teacher?
Substitute teachers. So as you heard earlier, we are really struggling with our subs. We're struggling to find subs. And we've had discussion across the superintendents in our area, especially at just the Stearns County Supes to, to understand where everybody is at from a substitute pay perspective. And so I, I linked in just the data of, of, of our surrounding and of our neighbors. And as you will see, we are, so we're currently at, at 120 and that's what I, I linked in the fee schedule. Kimball is at 130, Recorey was 125. Recorey is the reason that was, was pulling this data together. So I presume that that will not stay at 125. Albany is 130, Melrose 121. Sock was 120. I heard that Sock just increased theirs to 140.
Yep. We got school burnage, yep.
Holding Ford, Eden Valley Watkins is 150, BBE is 145 and they pay mileage. So there's, I, I would like for us to discuss increasing our rate of pay for our substitute teachers. So then in doing so, I asked, you know, I asked Amanda a couple of different questions. And so here's the data that, here's just our information. So in, and, and I don't think it's fair to use last year because last year we had, we had teachers that had to be quarantined. It was, I mean, it was just not the same type of data. I, I don't think it was fair to use. So I broke it down by, or I didn't, she broke it down for us by week. And you will see, so there's, cause what happens when we don't, when we can't find subs and we can't fill from outside is we have to fill internally. And you, so you can see how many, the first column is the no subs that are available. So we cover, we cover within. And then you'll see the subs that are, that we filled outside. And you can see as our year has been progressing, it's becoming more and more times that we are having to fill internally. We just don't have, we just, we're, we're competing for subs. So then how, who do we use to cover and how does that work? Well, these are some, these are three, these are, we have three different people that we've pulled and I put the, the cost, their, their daily rate of pay in there. You can see that then when we take those people away from their roles and they're covering a classroom, it's certainly. You can see that then, when we take those people away from their roles and they're covering a classroom, it certainly is not financially advantageous for us. By, um, using somebody who gets paid three hundred and fifty-eight dollars a day to sub in a classroom all day long, right? The other thing that we do do is we have, and our teachers have in our, in our, um, uh, in their contract that they can get twenty-seven dollars extra. Um, so last year, um, there was paid out four thousand dollars to teachers for subbing, um, during their prep, okay? Um, actually, I bet that's not last year, I bet that's in the same timeframe. So what we did look at is then how much, so we kicked around what, what seemed feasible, reasonable. We started at, we just threw out a hundred and fifty dollars a day, so if we increased it by twenty-five dollars. That would have been a difference of about nine thousand dollars over the course of the whole year last year. Okay, so this does not take into account, one of the things that was also on the sub, um. And I don't know if it's in there, okay, so one of the questions that was discussed is increases for retirees. So if somebody retires from our school district and we have them come back to sub for us. Would that, would it make sense for us to have a greater differential for them, knowing they have the knowledge, the connection, the relationships already in our buildings? What would be the value there? So you'll see Eden Valley pays two hundred dollars for their retirees, um, Holding Ford had a five dollar differential. Um, Albany had a ten dollar differential, um, Painesville, we don't have a differential, uh, right now. And to be honest with you, we don't have a lot of our, our teachers, our retired teachers who come back to some. So that might be another, another thing for us to think about. So I wanted to bring that to you for some discussion and questions.
Have you talked to Eden Valley to see how they're doing finding subs? Highest paid there, which means that if anybody shouldn't have any problems at all, it should be them. You know people over there, so what they saying?
They also hired two in-house subs that are contracted on B S step one. In addition to paying people this, do they have shortages of subs still, but not nearly as much?
But then they have two people that are subbing, so you take two right off our list.
Right.
Right?
But they got one from Hut, I mean, they're hiring people from, that they normally wouldn't have, it's not, you know, we have a list of subs that are pretty consistent. They didn't hire people from that list of people, they posted it, new applicants came in, so it looks a little different. That was my concern too, I'm like, I, cause I've been talking with Janelle and David, maybe we can hire an in-house sub, you know, put, put that person, let's, let's throw that idea around.
Yeah.
Um, with the fear then, that that would take away one of our subs that we use every single day, and that.
So if a, a person was a teacher and they decided to retire up here and they're sitting on Lake Cronus or Rice Lake or something, how would they know that it's available?
You would call them.
For what do you mean, like, how would we get a bro out of all this?
Yeah, how, how would we know, does anybody, does people like that know that we even need subs?
Yes. Yeah, I think there's, there's information that goes out on social media a number of times, it goes out in, um, in a lot of the parent newsletters. We've had some parents come in and we, we actually found a, a, I think a, a para hired, um, from our, from our parent newsletter, just. Saying, hey, we need subs, please reach out, do you, do you know anybody who is interested in subbing? So we're trying to put that out, but it also, um, they also asked, one of their first questions is, how much is it? How much do I get paid, you know, what's that, um?
So, so first the thing, uh, with, with frontline, if I'm a substitute teacher. I can be on frontline for Recorey and for Eden Valley and any district that I wanna be a part of. And if I have to choose between a school that's gonna give me a hundred and fifty dollars and a school that's gonna give me a hundred dollars or a hundred and twenty. That's where the competition comes in, cause they know which schools have openings that day.
Yeah.
That's where, that's where.
Well, you know where we're headed, if everybody was a hundred and fifty dollars, then somebody's gonna have to go to a hundred and sixty, then somebody's gonna go to a hundred and seventy.
Yeah.
I, I mean, that's just the way it works and you've just gotta find yourself a happy medium in there.
Right.
And, but if, if we could see the problems are gonna go away, but the problems don't go away, does it make any difference? Does it mean that?
Well, and, and I think.
I don't really, I don't have a solution, man.
Yeah, where I'm the most concerned is, is especially at our elementary, um, I, I think. Where we're, what, what's happening is we're pulling our interventionists, we're pulling the people who we have, who we have hired to target our, our struggling learners. Um, to fill classrooms, because we have classrooms of, of, our full classrooms that are, teachers haven't been able to come in. So now we, and it's natural, I mean, it, it naturally works, happens that way, but when, when that happens on an ongoing basis. Our kids who are struggling, that we have identified as part of our strategic plan, that we've gotta like, we have to target. Instruction and pulling our multi-tiered systems of support, we're taking those teachers to fill that classroom. So it, it just becomes a cyclical problem that is, and, and I, I think this is a place to start, it's, it won't be the end-all be-all solution. I mean, we know that we're gonna have issues, staffing issues are probably a, a common occurrence conversation for a number of years. But it's a place to start.
Something's not going away, but the moment we asked what Eden Valley, you start talking about some permanent subs or however, that coming in, I mean, where's that analysis?
Yeah. And that's, that's certainly is an option we could look at.
I mean, does that eliminate some of this problem? Um, all I'm saying is, if you're gonna get in the price game, you're often going and. I don't know where it's gonna go to from there, sometimes you'll be high, sometimes you'll be low, you'll be all over the place.
Right.
But does it mean we have to figure out what we can, now that's a different solution.
Yep, that is a different solution.
Permanent subs.
Mm-hmm.
And it's a different solution.
And that could be a one per.
We have a number of retired teachers that are, that are in this district right now, that if we could get. Them up to that point. We, they would come in and sub, and that would really help us.
Mm-hmm, just in the paper date.
Yeah.
So then, who's gonna make the suggestion to us of where we should go? We just, we probably just need to decide.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't we, I mean, I don't see that.
And I, I would be happy to make that recommendation, I'll, I'll sit down, we'll kind of have a little, uh, again, I mean, this was calculated at a hundred and fifty dollars a day. Um, and that would have been our, our cost for the course of, of one, of last year. Um, and then what I would do is I'll just put it on the, um, agenda in November and update the fee schedule. Um, I would also suggest that, that it might make sense that we, um, for our paras, our paras are currently thirteen dollars an hour. Um, and once that contract is negotiated, I think it would make sense to just have them start, just get that base, that step one, just that, the sub rate. I mean, I, I really do feel like that that would be, cause then, then whatever that change is to be, that would be the. It would, it would keep things a little bit more competitive for our paraprofessionals as well. So those are, those are the, a couple of the ideas that I had to try to bring some, bring us into some. Stepping forwards. So.
Nobody got a crystal ball on this one?
No. Okay. So in my hearing, do I have, I have, um, I will pull together a dollar amount for next month and I'll put that on, in the, and it'll be on the agenda. Um, the week before, so if you have questions, take a look at it.
Does that work with the contract, isn't that some, that's got to see or something, or?
Nope, this is, that's board approved, so this is all just part of the fee schedule, so that's why the, the fee schedule is linked in here.
Okay. So we're not messing up a contract that we have, but then.
Nope. Nope, nope, that's all part of the fee schedule, um, and you'll notice it's, um, item. Um, number, letter K, substitute teachers and, um, um, subs, and so I, this would be just taking a look at our paraprofessionals and our teachers.
Do we just not base the mileage on the I R S rate or what?
Um, we have not.
Okay, just curious.
Not for everybody, it's different. Okay. Um, and anything else on that? Otherwise, that's all I have for today.
Does anybody have anything that we wanna look at or talk about, that's my need?
Well, I just wanna, I have one thing, just, I think it's been an elephant in the room all night, and we really alluded to it a little bit, Bruce did, but it was the last election. And I don't know what point we have an opportunity to sit down and reevaluate.
Yep.
What happened and why it happened.
Yep.
I've been going through figures here in my head and looking at the last election, the bond and all of that, and I think at some point, we need to. Have a strategy session to, to look at it, cause it, it may be bleak, I, maybe it's not, you may think it's bleaker than what I think it was, that I think. Uh, but I think we need to do something with that as a point.
Um, one of the, a, a concept that I'd, I'd like to discuss, and so thank you for bringing that up, I, I, I've, um. One of my resources, un- unfortunately, her, her son passed away, um, um, election night, it was just. Very, very untimely, so I have not reached out to her, but she was given as a, a resource because she worked, um, she was a superintendent in a school district. That had numerous, numerous, numerous referendums fail. And one of the things that, um, I believe they did is they did almost like what's called a forensic survey to understand what happened and why. Um, and I would like to bring some of those for our planning strategy meeting, um, what, what I options. How can we find out from the public what, what they will support, why they didn't support this? So that we have a better understanding, cause I do think we have to know, um, but I think that might be one way to do that. I'm, I'm a little bit fearful of the cost of something like that, to be honest with you, cause I've, I've heard they're not, um, they're not very. Pocketbook friendly, but I don't know that, I don't know that yet.
I'm more concerned about the people that didn't vote, cause there were like, like three hundred and some that didn't vote from, from one to the next. But I was also wondering if, if it would be of any value, and, and I would be willing to maybe step forward, do part of this, but New London did pass theirs.
Yep.
And, um, they just went through a building project a little bit before ours.
Mm-hmm.
So in some ways, they were in a similar place, plus they were asking for twice as much as what we were, and yet it passed.
Yep.
And I'd be curious as to what they did.
Sure.
Well, and I think, didn't they have a failure?
Many.
They had a couple of failures.
Yeah, before they got there.
And they went through this.
Now, so I, I think that, I think we just need to gather all the information, can I agree with you a hundred percent?
Yep, and, and that's been my thought since, since election night, is that, you know, the, really, that's one of the first things, one of the. Biggest things we'll gain is a good survey of, of, essentially whether it's finding out why it didn't pass and what would they support, you know, what would the community support? What is, what are we looking at and how can we, how can we make that, you know, the best win for the district?
Personally, I will, I will always feel that it wasn't us. Um, they're hearing that their fuel prices are gonna be the highest that they have in a long time, we're hitting the inflation numbers of five point nine percent. The fuel prices are fifty percent higher than they were at the beginning of the year, this is just standard people, all they have to do is watch the news. And all of a sudden, a nickel, a dime, a quarter, uh, um, five dollars makes a difference for people.
But my god, my god, it is. I, no, I, I think there were a lot of yes votes out there that just didn't vote.
That didn't vote, I, I was.
And I wanted to say right now, I think Janelle did an excellent job.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
With, and Miranda did an excellent job, which I personally think that part of it was my fault. And I'm not gonna blame the rest of the school board, but I think maybe, at least, uh, from my standpoint, I didn't do enough. I went into it the Sunday before, someone said, well, by, oh, it's, it's gonna pass, that's not a problem. And I think I was just too laid back or whatever.
I'm, I'm with you.
Um, that I think we as a board, I as a board never could have done more.
I'm with you, with myself, with myself, not anyone else.
Yep.
It was quieter than anyone that I have heard.
Yes.
Very quiet, uh, the questions didn't come up, um, I shared with Janelle, I was at a couple of the coffee things. And there were questions that came up. After the fact was very interesting, some of the thoughts, there's people that. Are interested in our school that are out asking today, people maybe why? There were questions, how on earth could our, our issue be thirty-nine dollars, how come we had only thirty-nine dollars there? That, I wouldn't even have thought of that for a question, um, there were people that I know that questioned the inflation rate, there were things like that. I just believe we had another elephant, and it wasn't in Painesville, it was nationally affecting everybody that. Was something none of us were prepared for, I think.
Yeah, it could be a good combination of both, uh, but I, I. I, I feel that there was definitely, in hindsight, there's definitely a largely yes population that didn't, that assumed it was gonna pass and didn't come out and vote.
Well, next time we'll have a lot more voters.
Yep.
Cause it's gonna be a regular election time, and possibly that's a drawback to having them.
Yep.
Um, in an off-year election, but I still think our decision to move ahead was correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because it would have.
Yes.
Made our budget look a lot more, even though we all knew it was an off-year.
Yeah.
Next time around could be very interesting.
We've been very transparent in the fact that, uh, that we were coming to this vote now with the knowledge also that if it doesn't pass, we're gonna come back next year.
Yeah.
And that's, uh, that's kinda number one question I've got since, it's like, well, now what, I said, will we vote again next year, so, um. Those of you that, uh, that went out and voted this year, great, thanks for your support and your vote, you know, one way or the other. You'll look at the ballot again next year, so. It doesn't change our position, you know, with, with the finances of the district, so.
Should we have another line item on one of these meetings, Rick?
I don't know, whatever, whatever.
I can put it on, I can.
I think that makes sense.
Yep, I can add it.
January.
We're gonna kind of, yeah, January, uh, we have a regular meeting in January.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have, but back to our regular schedule in January, right?
Yeah.
The two.
We'll have a, we'll have a third, we'll have a.
Yeah, we'll have our organization.
Whatever one that we.
Yeah, the mid, the middle of the month, yep, you bet.
Yeah.
Where we have a little time, I, I think it behooves us to talk about it and maybe just. Kind of regularly talk about it.
Yep, that sounds great.
It's also good for us.
Yep.
Yep.
To see it on a regular basis, so we're out asking a lot more questions this time around, instead of maybe just thinking everybody's gonna come to us with positive questions that didn't happen.
Nope, I think that sounds like a great idea, thank you for that suggestion, yep.
Anything else?
I have good news for you guys, and I'm super excited to tell you about this, the National Honor Society has had a bake sale, started Monday, it will go out, continue tomorrow. We have already raised three hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Awesome.
And we will take all of that and use it to buy presents for families in need for Christmas.
Oh, awesome.
Great, that sucks.
Amazing, I'm super happy to tell you that.
Oh, that's awesome, thank you, thanks for doing that.
Yes.
Cool.
Okay, read it.
Are we going to have the Christmas trees again this year with the? Request.
Can you tell me more about that? I don't know.
Um, Matt didn't, didn't, they had one in, and Heather was in district office. Uh, the teachers, um, put little requests on for certain.
For families or children, okay.
Children, our families.
Okay.
And anybody who wants to go and take one of those or, uh.
Oh, I will ask about that. Can we talk about that tomorrow? Perfect, okay.
I don't know, did you, did you know about this, David? It's been done years past, I know, um, Melody would come to me with certain requests and we would go off. I will find out.
Yep, perfect.
Anything else? We'll go during the meeting, thank you, everybody.